Okay, we ready? We good? Ready? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call Monday, May 13th, 2019, Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Board Meeting to order. Please rise.
I'd like to begin by having a moment of silence for firefighters across the US that have lost their lives this past month, followed by a prayer. Dear God, we give you thanks for those that do so much for others and for these families that have lost a loved one in the line of duty. We pray, Lord, that you will give them strength and encouragement in their time of loss. Lord, as always, we ask for protection for our firefighters here in Benita as they serve the needs of the community and others, and pray that you always watch over them. Be with her family, Lord, and protect them. Be with the leaders of the department, the commissioners, give them wisdom in making decisions that impact the lives of others. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment on agenda items this evening? I don't have any cards up here, but if anybody would like to comment on an agenda item. Seeing none, I need an approval of the April 8, 2019 regular meeting minutes. So move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One motion for April 2019 and current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgment of financial report, acknowledgment of wire transfers and transfers between accounts and budgeted purchase orders over $10,000.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentations. Turn that over to the Chief.
Yes, thank you, board members and public. I would like to recognize firefighter EMT Timothy Bogaz for 25 years of service. He got hired, I think, six months after me, I believe it was, right? There's not enough that I can, enough good I can say about firefighter Bogaz. Firefighter Bogaz has been the model firefighter for 25 years. I know when I was a lieutenant, and every other lieutenant here can say the same thing, I'm sure, I'm sure of it, he is the guy you want on your truck in any circumstance. He's been there like clockwork for calls. He's highly knowledgeable in his job, and I don't even know what else to say about Tim, but he's a friend and a great firefighter. Congratulations, Tim. Come on up.
Congratulations. Big milestone.
So again, we have the great opportunity to present another Phoenix Award, which means we have another person in Benita Springs that our crews responded to that was lifeless and is actually here sitting in the room tonight. So it's always a great, like I said, privilege for us to be able to do that. So if you don't know, the Phoenix Award is given to emergency responders, healthcare workers that lend assistance and treat a person that has no pulse and no breathing, so they are clinically dead. So we confirm that with the rhythm that shows up on the cardiac monitor. And anyway, it's, again, every time I go through this, it's amazing that it happens and we do it so often, which is a good thing. So this particular call came in, and I want to point out a few things on this one. When I come up and talk about these, when we talk about them, the things we point out is the speed at which people start chest compressions and the speed at which they are able to defibrillate someone with an AED or in this case, a cardiac monitor. And many times, that's absolutely the difference between life and death. So we go out in the community and we talk to communities just like Valencia and Village Walk and all these places, Benita Bay, Pelican Landing, we do it on a regular basis about how important those things are because time is so, so important. This particular call happened on a pickleball court in Valencia, which is right next to Station 26. So we were on the scene of this call within four minutes of it coming in. So I like to point that out because Station 6 hasn't been there that long. So think about the timeline it would've taken to come from Station 24. We all know the distance it was and why the board and we put that station in. This one absolutely might've made a difference in this call because any kind of extension of time past that may have, the outcome may have been different. So on this call, when our crews showed up, the call came in as a seizure. The patient wasn't in cardiac arrest initially, but because they showed up so soon, the person actually went, the patient actually went into cardiac arrest in front of them. Took his last breath, went pulseless, stopped breathing, and they were on scene. So last time we did the, I did a Phoenix Award, we did a Phoenix Award presentation, talked about the dynamic of the call and how it's up to the crews to follow the cardiac rhythm, what's going on with the patient, and all the things that happened. In this case, they come in expecting a seizure, and I think actually came in as a possible, another call, what was it? Oh, stroke, a stroke or a seizure, and quickly changed gears because of the way it presented. And then when they put the monitor on, because of the rhythm they were in, they shocked within, I think, a minute of being on scene. Later that day, take it back to me a little bit, I have to say this because I don't get to say it very often, we were doing one of these presentations, Nicole, our public education coordinator, and myself at another community. And we usually talk about, you know, on TV, when you see people get that shock and they spring right up, that usually doesn't happen. So they usually go to the hospital and they have a long recovery time, but I had heard about this call that morning. In this case, after he was defibrillated the second time, woke up and was concerned about the last point in the pickleball game. And if they were winning, in fact, when he went in the ambulance, I was told again, and I confirmed tonight, that he didn't want to go to the hospital. He wanted to go back and finish the game. Very, very rare, no doubt in my mind, for all of us that know this industry, that if we had not been there on that, in that short period of time, that those results may not have happened. Another minute or two and those things just don't happen. So it's amazing that it is. We're glad you're here tonight, and I'd like to introduce the crews that were there. So this was ladder 26, and on that was Lieutenant Paramedic Jonathan Whitlock. If you come up to the front of the room, Lieutenant. Firefighter EMT Randy Warstein. Firefighter EMT Todd Frank, Frank Todd, excuse me. You're one of those like me, Rich Scott with two, yeah. And from Medic 6, Ryan Stefiri and Jesse Capurso. And I don't believe they're here. Let's recognize them.
That's what it's all about right there. Great work. Let this, well, you want to do the, let's do the MDA check presentation.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
Who's doing the MDA check?
Randy McGovern.
Okay. Now would be the time.
All right, how's everybody doing today?
Great.
Excited to be up here again. I think we were up here about a year ago.
Yep.
And we had some great news and it didn't change this year. One of the things that we end up doing this year, we collected for three weekends again, and our local 3444 finished number one in all of the departments here in Lee County in money's collected for our annual MDA boot drive. So we're very proud of that. I wanted to personally thank all of the firefighters. We've got a lot of them here now that ended up stepping out in the streets there. Our BCS were out there as well, and they did a great job. I want to thank the, or one of the things I did want to say about the weather, because that did come up on our third day, first two days that we collected was awesome, comfortable temperatures. We started doing this in February. Next thing you know, the last week, the last weekend that we did, it was like 90 degrees. We broke a record. So we had a brush fire. So I think it was B ship that was out that day. They came back after the brush fire and stuff into the heat, and they got out there and collected as well. So, you know, a big thank you to all of the firefighters and the BCS that were out there collecting because without them, certainly this is not going to be possible. I also want to thank the chiefs, all of y'all, and as well as the commissioners for allowing us to do this. It's, you know, a great thing, and we do appreciate y'all allowing us to get out there and do that every year. I wanted to also say a thank you to Ms. Cindy. She's the executive director for our local MDA office. She does a lot of things behind the scenes that really helps me to get everything prepared for our annual boot drives, as well as a lot of other things that she does with the MDA. She'll be able to speak about a little bit here in just a moment. Let's see, I want to say a thank you to Carter. He's not here tonight, but Carter is one of our young guys. He's actually, he's came out two different days on our boot drive. He's seven, I think, now?
Six.
Six. And he's in a wheelchair. He's affected by muscular dystrophy, but he spent a lot of time with our firefighters that were out there. We set up a rehab center, and next thing you know, some of the residents would come over and actually donate money while he was sitting there too, so played a big part. But what a wonderful young man, and he's kind of like our little ambassador here. Let's see here. Also wanted to thank the, you know, the community, the residents of Benita Springs, as well as the ones that just passed by. Certainly without them, this certainly isn't all possible as well either. I do want to thank a few of our community sponsors, Publix, Walmart, BJ, Sam's Club, and of course, Mission Barbecue. They provided some great barbecue for our lunches for the guys out there. Every year, I'm trying to come up with some different things that we can actually do that's really going to end up, you know, helping our firefighters because it is usually kind of warm out there, and it's a lot of work to get out there in the streets and stuff and go around, start collecting money. Some guys are in bunker gear, some guys are out there with their helmets on, so, and then others are just in their regular uniforms. A big thank you to the owner of the Sunoco Station there at the corner of Benita Beach Road and US 41. He allows us to take over his parking lot, and I set up a tent and everything else, and we kind of come in there, and he's such a nice gentleman. He ended up saying, whatever ice you need, just go ahead and let the girls know, and then we can go ahead and use all the ice that we needed as well for that. And so with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Cindy, and again, I just want to say thank you to the guys back there in the back and everybody here. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate it. It's easy for me to stand up here, you know, because I'd say I could stay up and take the credit for it, but no, it's not, man. It's you guys that all end up doing it, and no complaints at all. So I really appreciate that.
Hi, everybody. Like Randy said, I'm Cindy Nichols, the executive director of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and I just want to take a moment, you guys raised this phenomenal amount of money, and I just want to let you know what the MDA does with that money. So money raised here in our community stays in our community. And last year, we were able to serve over 600 kids, 618 to be exact, kids and adults with muscular dystrophy and ALS in our community.
That's awesome.
We're able to provide hundreds of visits at our care center to these families, on average, saving them six hours apiece because they can see all their doctors all in one place. We sent dozens of kids to MDA Summer Camp, which Randy can attest, it's an amazing place. It's free of charge to their families, and there, they're learning life skills they wouldn't otherwise learn anywhere else. Nationally, MDA last year alone funded 224 research projects, and research has come a long way for neuromuscular disease, and thanks to MDA Fund of Research, we've funded six of the nine approved therapies for muscular dystrophy. May is ALS Awareness Month, and I just want to bring that out there. A lot of people don't realize ALS is a type of muscular dystrophy, but that is also one of the therapies that is now approved, and so folks are living longer lives. There's no cure for muscular dystrophy, but we're definitely slowing the progression. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my hearts, the support from Benita Springs Fire Department and the generosity of Benita Springs is like no other. You guys raised over $45,000 in just three days, and it's absolutely, it makes me speechless. Definitely, I want, I had another banner made this year because local 3444 is once again, as Randy said, the number one department in Lee County raising money for the MDA. It shows, we've had a 65-year partnership with the IAFF, and we couldn't do what we do without Southwest Florida firefighters, our biggest supporters overall. 60% of what I raised last year was because of our firefighters. So thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to head, should we just do the check? Or this toe?
We'll do both.
Okay. Okay. I'll stand there, you have to stand on your toes though, because I'm wearing heels. No, no, no. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. That's awesome. Thanks, guys. We're going to take a five-minute recess now. For anybody that doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but I know a lot of the, a lot of people here probably would like to head for the doors. Okay, thanks. Call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is our comprehensive audit of financial statements of Ashley Brown and Company. Mr. Jeff Brown going to educate us.
As Chairman referenced, Jeff Brown with Ashley Brown and Company CPAs, and here to do a brief presentation of your audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2018. With me also is Jamie Stradico, and she was heavily involved in your audit this year, and if there's questions I can't answer, she's going to help me out. As you know, it's a relatively lengthy document. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. The first thing in here is on pages one through three. It's our independent auditor's report. Again, similar with prior years, it's what we call the unmodified, the old term was unqualified, clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you receive from an auditor. Basically, it states that the financial statements, as they were prepared by your staff, were accurate, they were auditable, organized, the records were what they were supposed to be for us to do our job. So again, we appreciate their efforts. The next is the management's discussion and analysis, and if you haven't, I encourage you to read through that. It provides a nice narrative overview of the financial highlights of the year. It's got some comparative information in there for the current year and the prior year, some tables and that sort of thing, so it just provides a nice, a nice brief overview. There's a reference in here too, which I'll kind of point out, which is the new, new for this year. On page two in that opinion, there's a paragraph in there that says the change in accounting principle. So there's a statement in here that talks about the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number 75, which the district implemented this year. And the old number was 45, so it has to do with what we call your OPEB, the Other Post Employment Benefits. The actuary, actuarial study that you get, they changed a lot of the methodology and assumptions in there. So what happened was there's what we call a restatement of your financial statements, basically. So that's kind of highlighted in here. That's really the only new and exciting thing in here for this year, but I'll show you what, what that did to you. If you look to page 10, this is the statement of net position, and what this does is it snapshots all the assets and liabilities of the district as of that year-end date. So it has both current assets and then your, what we call the non-current, which is basically your fire stations, your fire trucks, your equipment and that sort of thing. But about halfway down the page there, you can see that the total assets, and this new term that we talked about a couple of years ago, deferred outflows of resources is just over 40 million. And then if you look down the very bottom number there, the total net position, so you take the total assets and then you reduce it by liabilities, and you're left with a positive 2.7 million. So that's just everything in total, all the assets and all the liabilities of the district as of that point in time. And then if you turn over to the next page, the statement of activities, this is the overall, all the revenues and all the expenses that the district incurred during the year. But then here's where you're going to start seeing that restatement word that I was talking about. So basically what happened, I want to, that fourth line, third line up from the top, that prior period restatement, $7.4 million, that's the net effect of this new GASB 75 that we're talking about. And there's a footnote in the back that I'll show you too, that just kind of points more emphasis to that as well. If you turn over to page 12, this is the, the old version of the governmental statements, and this is more, it shows the current, what we call the current assets and current liabilities. So it doesn't have the equipment, it doesn't have the pension stuff on there or any of this OPEB things. It's more of like a cash basis type of a statement, and it breaks it out different between the general fund and the impact fee fund. But here, you can kind of see that the total, basically it's cash, cash and receivables for both the general fund and the impact fee fund, 12.5 million, and the total liabilities were only a million. So the district, as you know, is financially sound and stable as of the end of the year. If you turn over to page 14, this is the modify, it's not the full accrual accounting, if you will, it's more of a cash basis, total cash revenues in and total cash expenditures out. So again, that first column's the general fund, and the second column reports just the impact fee. But total revenues for the general fund for the year, just under 24.8 million, and the total expenditures were 25.3 million. And then you did have some transfers, as you, as you normally do, between the impact fee fund and the general fund, but at the end, that third line up from the bottom, the revenues and transfers in were just, were $253,000 less than the expenditures. There's lots of footnotes in here, describes the organization, the significant accounting policies and procedures, but one I just kind of want to bring to your attentions back on page 35, and this breaks out the, all the long-term, in accounting world, what we call the long-term liability. So the only traditional loan or liability that you see is that first one on there, which is the note payable, and then you have these new things that I'm talking about, the OPEB piece of it represents almost 10 million there, and then the net pension liability, and then the last one is that compensated absences. So that $34 million number is reported on the first schedule. I showed you the statement of net position, but this just gives you a little bit more breakdown of what that's comprised of. And then back on page 64 is a brief footnote that describes that change in accounting principle again, that I talked about, and it shows what the prior period net position was, what the restatement was, and that had to do with GASB 75, and that's the exciting stuff there. Back on page 66 is the, what we call the budget-to-actual schedule for the general fund. So again, here, we're looking all the way out to the right-hand column on revenue side. We, you have what we call a favorable variance. You budgeted total revenues to be 24.4 million, it actually came in at that 24.799 million, so $334,000 positive variance. And then the same thing down under total expenditures. Total expenditures were budgeted to be 35.6, and they actually were 25. It's a little bit misleading, if you will, because in that $35 million number's about 4 million of contingencies and reserves, but even if you take that out of there, you're still way, way under budget. So again, you know, you, you didn't over expend the budget, which is a good thing. Last couple of things here, on page 86 and 87 is another one of our reports on your report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. On page 87, there's two positive statements in there. One of them regarding internal controls, our audit did not identify any deficiencies that we considered to be material weaknesses, and then again, under the compliance and other matters, another positive statement, the results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. And then in here is also a report to management, numerous references in here to rules of the Auditor General, Florida statutes, and all positive statements, the district complied with everything that you were required to for that fiscal year. So with that, we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Chairman, if I may. Certainly. You mentioned our contingency money. Yes, sir. That was on page 66. Where is that money actually itemized, so we know?
If you flip all the way back to the beginning on page 12, now that's the contingencies that you had left at the end of the year. There's two things going on there, the page that, so I think this maybe answers your question.
These guys right down here. Okay.
And what they're, what they're, what we call a sign for.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions? We like getting these A's on our report cards, so kudos to, to the finance and to Lisa's department. You guys do a great job, and I know you, we all work pretty well together.
Absolutely. We appreciate their efforts, for sure.
Thanks again to everybody. Nice job.
You're welcome. Thank you. And again, just to follow up, you know, we work for you. If there's anything that we can help you out during the year, if you've got questions, you know, Lisa and the chief know how to go.
Well, you could go up to Tallahassee for us and straight.
Uh, maybe. I'm no help to you there, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Maturio.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank the chairman, I'd like to thank the firemen for coming in here. Thank you very much. I wanted you guys to see what we're working on, and thanks to everyone that helped make it a reality.
If I may, sir? We're going to, we're going to turn the lights off if the commission would like to come view the production from.
Before we get started, I was just going to address a couple of things. Why do we want to do a TV show? What are the benefits of producing a show like On the Line?
And there's a couple of reasons. It will serve to inform the public regarding our services, programs, and the fire district's mission. It will educate the public on fire safety and emergency, medical emergencies. It will show members of the public how their taxed hours are being spent, and it will highlight just how much hard work goes into maintaining a fire district of this caliber. We ask a lot of our men and women in the fire district, and this really shows what they do. This week, I have meetings with both Benita and Lee County Government Television for scheduling purposes, and this is basically a window into the firemen and women's daily routine on the job. So I'm going to, I'm going to start the production here, and you could take a look at, keep in mind- could take a look at. Keep in mind, this is a pilot episode. It's the first one. We've got lots of stuff to refine. But it's, it's, I think it's pretty good. I hope you like
Hello. I am Fire Commissioner Jeff Maturro. Welcome to On the Line, your new connection to the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. This program will serve to provide an insight and answer any questions you may have regarding our special district. The firemen and women that keep our community safe, constantly trained to hone their skills and perform as a team under extreme conditions. Here is a rare opportunity to watch a mass casualty incident training exercise.
All right. What we're doing here today is we have a mass casualty incident, what we call it, MCI. We've got volunteers throughout the community through our CERT team to come out here. What our crews are doing is simulating a bus accident into a car, into multiple cars. So, what our crews are doing is rolling up right now and they're triaging these people, which is a quick assessment. Are they, we have four categories, walking wounded, serious injury, critical injury, or dead on arrival. So, there's four different colors that we use. So, when you see this, you'll see some people have green tags, some people have a red, a yellow, or a black, black meaning that they're deceased. So, what our crews do is go there and identify. We have a set, set parameters, i.e. if they are, you know, breathing too fast, they're automatically a, a red. If they're walking around with just a scrape or a bump, bump, they're a green. Obviously, we go there, if somebody's down, not breathing, we take a pulse, open the airway. And at that point, they still don't have a pulse or breathing, they become a black. Because at this point, we have five or more patients, which are, is greater than what we can, that we can handle. So, that's why we call it a mass casualty incident. So, they will do that, so we can get to the ones that we can survive the quickest and get them to the hospital and get them educated
So, it takes a lot of time and effort to get this kind of training involved and scheduled. We had some of our CERT team members being victims and, and patients. But probably took us about two months to schedule all of this. We also got a bus from Lee County School District. They actually let us borrow it for simulation of our, our training today. We simulated a school bus versus multiple cars. Again, this takes time and effort from not only
So far, so good. It's been going good. It's a good learning experience. It's getting guys familiar with the TRIA system. It's getting guys familiar with prioritizing the patients with their vitals and putting hands on them with the education. So, I think we're covering many bases on this evolution. So, it's not just one-dimensional. We've covered
Twenty-five, twenty-one came in. Made contact with them. I knew we were going to have an extrication. He pointed me to the PEC patient, Peter Stigville. And we did a national, little difficult.
Did we just get it in?
Yes. Yeah, we got it. It was just a couple of cuts. Maybe could have been a little bit harder and maybe a little better placement.
So, we got there and there was a, you had one yellow patient who was pregnant and did post-preassessment. We drew a red based on her five days of being pregnant.
Very good. Every time I called them for update, they knew just how many patients they had, where there were seven. So, they were in trouble.
We did have a tool that failed.
Yes. Twenty-one?
We were to give it.
I bet you didn't know these men and women are constantly trained. Well, recently, I had an opportunity to pose a question to my fellow commissioners. Here's what they
Well, there's several achievements that I think as a board collectively, we should be proud of. We took over, I got elected in two thousand eight. And as we all know, the downturn in the economy was pretty significant. And when I came on the board, we had a hundred and thirty employees and four stations running roughly four thousand calls. And here we are today with seven stations running almost eight thousand calls with about a hundred and sixteen people. That in itself is an accomplishment. We've also paid off all the debt. There's no mortgages. We're totally, totally debt-free. Our ISO insurance rating is now at a two, which is about as good a rating as you can get to the top two percent in the country. And we've lowered taxes five straight years. And are building up reserves for our future needs for another station and whatever, whatever needs the district is going to need with like new boats and everything is paid for and everything's in
In the five years since I've been on, we've been able to lower our military every year, both in men and other accomplishments. To look to the future and the four years ahead, we want to keep continuing the same direction we're going, keeping the service at the top-shelf level at the lowest cost possible. And with the growth coming on, we might have to expand again. And right now, we're putting in reserves enough in the future to, to construct another station or add more firefighters, DMTs, or paramedics as needed without having any loans, any costs, and keep the military coming down. It's a, it's a revolving system and we have to just adjust as we go along. But we, I'm, I am a citizen resident and I like taxes low. And that's what I'm going to keep fighting for.
One of the main challenges I see is bringing the community more involved in what we do here at the fire district. One of the programs that we have is called our Community Emergency Response Team, in that we train the residents of our community to help themselves, their family, and the rest of the community in the event of an actual disaster. Hurricane Irma was a good example of just how the community could come together and help one another. And I would love to see as many people as possible through the training here at the fire district to help the rest of the community out.
Right now, Chief Joseph Daigle answers one of the many questions we receive here at the fire district.
Well, one of the reasons that we have, there's several reasons. But one of the reasons why we have the fire engine go with the ambulance to a medical scene is because, is because it is impossible to accurately run an advanced life support call with only two people you see on an ambulance. In fact, we base our entire treatment around ALS call with five people. So, you typically will have three on an engine and two on an ambulance to provide that level of service, if it's an advanced life support call. We do not send an engine with an ambulance on every call. Just typically, you see which we run most of are emergency medical calls, which we're not really sure what is taking place at the time or at the, at the location where we respond to. So, we will always send the, the appropriate amount of people needed for an advanced life support call, at which time we cancel if we're not needed. For example, if we're on scene first and we don't need the ambulance, we'll cancel the ambulance. And the ambulance will turn around and stay in service. Or vice versa, if the ambulance doesn't need us, then they will cancel us. But we err on the side of caution all the time. And typically, there's more fire engines here in Benita Springs than there are ambulances. So, nine times out of ten, we get there first. So, what we'll do is we will start treatment on a patient and maybe carry the treatment all the way through, at which time we will transfer the patient to the ambulance. And then we enter for the next call. So, that ensures that the public always has a, an emergency medical crew, an advanced life support crew, meaning the firefighters, in service in their zone where their station is located.
Hello. I'd like to talk to you about early recognition of stroke. As a nation, we have gotten much better at early recognition and activation for cardiac issues. We have not with stroke. Stroke is very similar to the cardiac issue and lack of oxygen to your brain, whereas the cardiac is lack of oxygen to your, to your heart. Time is brain matter. The longer you delay activating the 911 system and getting to definitive care, the more deficit, neurological deficit you can suffer, up and including death. So, a couple of signs and symptoms I just want to cover quickly is any kind of neurological deficit, speech, one-side weakness on the left or right, your smile, or anything that seems out of the ordinary for someone. Whether it's a stroke or not, it can still and usually is a, can be a major malady or a major medical concern. So, don't dismiss these things. Don't think they're going to clear up. It can be a matter of life and death. So, please activate the system and call 911. Many times, an individual will try to convince you that they will get better and this is not an issue. Again, anything that seems out of the ordinary is a serious, I hope you found this program informative and entertaining. From my fellow commissioners,
All right. I'd like to apologize for looking like a CNN in the first Gulf War over a video phone. I assure you, it's not jerky when it airs. And it, it really ruined it because I was watching it on the computer here and it's moving fine. Somehow, when it was talking to the screen, it, it looked like the first Gulf War. But that's the show.
Well, from where I sit, you did a remarkable job on that. And thank you very much.
Not bad for an ex-cop.
Okay, next item, Commissioner's business. Commissioner Murphy?
I have no additional business today.
Commissioner Gassola?
None either, thank you.
I don't know, Chief, if we want to bring it up now or about the vacancy, or do we want to do that at the next meeting on the commissioned vacancy?
I would say wait until the next meeting, please, sir.
Then I have nothing, other than kudos to Commissioner Maturro.
Oh, thank you very much.
No, that was outstanding. Any old business? Anybody got anything they want to discuss? Okay, under new business, I need a motion for the disposal of assets report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need the approval of the final payment of our new Marine twenty-seven.
So moved. Having already signed the check, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The new boat is awesome, by the way. And kudos to you guys for designing and building it. From what I understand, it's the only one like it in the country at this point, correct? I mean, it is exactly the same as that one. So, we're setting another new standard as we always do in Benita. Nice job, gentlemen. Chief's report. Chief Daigle?
Yes, gentlemen. I have one item. I bring this up because the majority of commission, the commissioners have, have inquired about our travel and how we do our travel. It's not the first time, but it gives us an opportunity to explain to the, to the, the community how we do it and how we work it out. First, if you'd like to pass out the, we basically have an itinerary of from fiscal year two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
And the travel that has been, that has taken place since the fiscal year eighteen. First of all, when we, when we look at travel through the budgeting process, all of our trips essentially are approved through the budgetary process. Like, for example, we would do for Fire Rescue East, you have one, two, three, four, five, six. So, we typically will ask the board for approval for six people to go on one of these trips. And that happens with each one of these trips and each one of these positions has been budgeted in the budgetary process early on. Well, since I've been in the administration and since I've been the chief, we have never sent anyone on a trip other than if they are actually paramount to the trip that we are going on or the travel that we are doing. For example, we have experts, local experts in issues such as our hose, our gear, our medical, our trucks, our thermal imaging camera. And what we do is we And what we do is we take all these pieces of equipment and we test them ourselves. Many times, we'll bring some of the vendors out here and we'll test them in our own training site to try to discern which, which product we're going to get and which product we're going to, the board would decide to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on. For example, hose, we, there's hundreds of type of hose. You've got double jacketed hose, rubber hose, different types of hose. And we look at each one and try to decide which, which one we're going to choose. And to do that, sometimes it takes traveling to the factory to see how they're built. Another issue is like, for example, when we build, when we build trucks, we're typically allotted a couple of different trips to go review these trucks. Well, on the first trip, normally, we'll send a mechanic, one of our mechanics and our operations chief and potentially a commissioner sometimes, I believe, because the truck is not built yet. We essentially have our mechanics go through the truck. I don't go because I don't know anything about mechanics. But we have our E V Ts go through the truck with a fine tooth comb to make sure that the mechanics are all in place, the mechanics of the, of the truck itself and the pump. So that's essentially how we determine where the trips come from. When I say trips, the, the work trips. And for like the Fire Department Instructors Conference, you have one, two, three, four, five, six. Typically, the fire, like a Fire Department Instructors Conference is the largest conference in the entire United States. That's typically the only one that I go to because that's where we looked and reviewed the ambulances, when we were looking at ambulances. That's where we picked up the type of fire truck we want. We, the latest foam issue, when we were up at FDIC, we looked to try to find manufacturers that do not provide the, the type of foam we're trying to get away from. They have Firehouse reporting software. That's where we get to learn about the different types of software that we use. Additionally, that was the first time we actually saw one of the types of boats that we have here today, essentially a rescue boat. And where, determine the direction that we were going to go in by, by reviewing the different types of boat that you can only see at this conference, that they have so many of them. Another thing is like, for example, if you see Chaplain Chitwood in the first conference in travel, we sent Chaplain Chitwood. He was the only one to go to that simply because we don't have anybody else on the department that looks to be a chaplain. And you'll see like Nicole Hornberger, she's the only one going to the NIOA Training Conference. So that's how we determine who goes on these trips. For example, another one is the government auditing standards, which I will not be going to, but Lisa goes to that one, obviously. So we can continue to get these outstanding audits that we've been getting to learn the, to learn the, the different accounting procedures and the ever-changing rules that we have to abide by. So I did, I know during the economic downturn, we cut a lot of, a lot of our training out and we also cut a lot of the maintenance of the districts. But I wanted to thank the board and the public for allowing us to go to these, not only training seminars, but to ensure that the district is properly reviewing all the equipment that is paid for by the taxpayer. So thank you very much for this opportunity and I hope the, the community learns something about it. Thank you. And that is the only thing I have.
Thank you, Chief. Assistant Chief DeWitt. Chief Scott.
It's not going to be that much time. I just wanted to give you a little, a little more of an update on the boat. If you haven't seen it, it's out in the bay. And afterwards, of course, I know we're late tonight. If you would like to take a look, climb aboard, we can show you around.
Hook it up, we're going fishing. Let's go. Hook it up, we're going fishing.
So I wanted to confirm that since when we went up to North Carolina and since it's been here, the boat does draft, one of the big issues that we have here in Bonita and around Stero Bay, the boat drafts 15 inches of water, which is roughly a foot less than the competition that we looked at. And this foot doesn't seem like a lot until you need another foot of water to get in, specifically on and off our lift. We also have made plans already and have it scheduled to modify the lift that we have to fit this boat and we're going to save another four to six inches on the lift construction and how we're going to make it some of because of the, the construction of the boat being aluminum instead of fiberglass. We anticipate having it in service, I'd say, within a month to be safe. We're shooting for a little sooner, but we'll go with a month for now. Training, the lift, we don't have an exact date on the lift. I hope it's in the next two weeks. So it's kind of the, the rough plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Madden's report is in the pack. I'm assuming everybody's looking. As usual, nice job. Time for public comment. Mr. Grant.
Going back to my thinking last month, when I was running some figures by, and I know you want the, what I figured out, if you had anywhere between 33 and 36 firefighters between on duty, between, let's say, 7:00 AM and midnight, you could do two shifts, one working four days a week and then three days off and the other shift, three days a week, four days off and rotate. So in other words, you would have, and also the other two shifts, C and D shifts, you would have 20 people that would give you manning for at least three people in each station except for Station Five, Station One, which would have five. But anyway, it would come out that you would have at least anywhere between three and five people. Station One would have five, but the other, other five stations would have three people between midnight and 7:00 AM. And that would give them, instead of being sleeping on duty, they'd be ready to roll right out the door when a call comes in. That would save you some response time and especially between midnight and 7:00 AM, you would have less traffic also on the road. So that's the idea, what I'm looking at. You're probably looking at about each pay period, two weeks, you'd be running probably about, on the average, between 35 and 40 hours a week. Say, on the, you would be running, let's say, for the month, you would have a typical firefighter working not less than 140 hours a month, but not more than 160 hours a month. Now, that would help your overtime situation and would also reduce your, the idea being the pension system, you could not put as much pressure as on your pension system down the road within, say, between five and 10 years from now. So that's where I'm coming from. You're not looking for a great deal of additional personnel, maybe eight people or so above what you have now. So that's the general idea. If you want any details, I'm willing to help you in any, any manner, giving you any details. What did I drop? I don't know, span it is. Okay. Thank you. So, okay.
Do we have any further public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert LaRue. Most people know me as Popeye. I'm the amateur radio operator assigned to this facility right here. We have an emergency orange box in the other room there. I just wanted to say that I went through CERT training about a month ago, the two-day, and it was very, very informative and I'm retired Navy, by the way. Anyway, it was an interesting two days and especially the EMT's demonstration on the dummy with the atrial fibrillation. I'm leading to last Tuesday night when they actually came to my brother and I's house in Imperial Bonita Estates because Brother John had a full-blown atrial fibrillation event. Heart rate in the 140s, irregular and all that, so he got, they worked on him and it was the same people that did the demonstration for the CERT training. I said, hey, guys, good to see you again. But anyway, he got transported to Lee Emergency up on Coconut Road. This was approximately 8 o'clock at night and I was there with him and we got home about 11:15. And the good thing was that he did not have to be transported to a hospital. Good stuff. And the CERT training, they said, yeah, don't mess around, call 911. And my little doggy and I were at the dog park. You know, when all this was going on, he put his blood pressure monitor on and that's where his blood pressure was through the roof and like I say, 140s and irregular. And when I got back about 45 minutes later, he'd already taken his meds and all that. But anyway, I just wanted to say it is a privilege to be working with you all and working for you. I work with Jim Kaufman with the Emergency Amateur Radio, which we have an excellent rapport with Lee County. We have a radio room right in the E O C and Lee County has financed our orange boxes at the rate of about 700 bucks per box when you get radio and that. But it has been a pleasure of, and we've been down here a little over a year. I was up in Punagorda in the Emergency Operations Center during Irma. And of course, we were sitting on a, you know, what's going to happen while this thing was parked down here hammering this. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you. Thanks for the time to speak to you all.
Thank you for your service. Anybody else take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.